I'd like to call the city council meeting for October 6, 2020. To order, please. Roll call.
Arthur?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Don?
Here.
Amber?
Here.
Please stand for pledge allegiance. Council, before you have your agenda packet for this evening, I would accept a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second it.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Amber?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Larry? Arthur?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Council also in your packet is approval of city council meetings from September 1st, 2020, 20 and the committee of the whole minutes from June 16th, 2020. Would you accept a motion for approval, please?
Motion to approve.
Second it.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Jean?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Larry? Arthur?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Item number six is going to be comments from citizens. What I would like to do is go over some of the ground rules that we apply at our meetings at the city council. If you'd like to speak, and there's several people in here, so I don't mind for our council hearing each and every one of you all to speak tonight. But what I ask is that you make you a line, so that way nobody's running over each other, kind of separate out if you can. Also, keep your comments to three minutes or less. That way, we're not here till midnight. And everybody's aware of the time limit, and I'll be keeping the time on this, alright? Also, to expedite as much as possible, if your comments are the same as somebody else's, then I ask that you make up something else that you want to talk about. Alright? And then, secondly, the council tonight is hearing, because I know that the majority of you are in here, is for the application for rezoning of this property. And I know there's been lots of stuff posted on Facebook and little pink notes going out everywhere. The council is not voting on expansion of the landfill here tonight. The council is not voting on street widening here tonight, although they are here to entertain a bid that's on Fletcher Road out here by the new school, which has nothing to do with the landfill. So, I will make all of you that promise that there will be no votes here tonight on expansion of the landfill or widening any of the streets. But if you would like to comment on the rezoning, and if you haven't had a chance to get one of those packets back there, we kind of laid it out for you, and I'm sorry the back page got cut off when we were handing it out, but the second page on this packet tonight is the current zoning of the landfill. Okay? Which is R-MH. And like I said earlier this evening, the council has already put in place in chapter 153.086, exclusive use landfill district zoning. And that's what the applicant has applied for. They haven't applied for expansion or street widening, okay? So if we can keep our comments to specifically this, I would appreciate that, okay? So if anybody would like to speak, please come to the podium. Please state your name and your address, just for record, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Yes, sir. Come on up.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just have a piece of information that I'd like to have y'all have available to you. Excuse me, I'm Robert E. Nolan, N-O-W-L-I-N. I live 12130 Red Oak Drive. If you had the map up, I could show you precisely, but I'm directly on the south side. It's part of Red Oak Country Estates. Piece of the land that was given to them was specifically, which is addressed in a document I want y'all to have, 7.83 acres, which is immediately behind me, which was initially a part of Red Oak Country Estates and zoned with Red Oak Country Estates. Particular document I have that I'd like for y'all to have a copy of is statements of Thomas B. Burke, attorney at law. He is located in Fayetteville. This was in discussion back in May 24th of 1999, pointing out to the covenants, addressing not only the particular area behind me, but the other two areas also. I want to be sure the board has this in hand, because as he points out here, it is a case where the title company failed. And he is enjoying that the people at Waste Management probably have a good case against the title company in regard to how they use the land. So I want to be sure y'all have this and making a decision. Who would I get a copy? Who would I get?
You can give it to each and every one of them if you like.
Okay.
Start that in and work this way.
Okay, well, where can I get a copy? Where can I? I'll be glad to run the copies.
Oh, I apologize. I thought you had.
I don't, I don't, I just found this not just a couple hours ago, and so.
If you don't mind giving it to our recorder treasurer and she'll run and make a copy for you.
Sure.
Yes, please. Is that all, sir? Okay, alright. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you. Mark Calcagni at 12642 Arbor Acres Road. And alls I wanted to state was I was the one that passed out some information on the covenants. And then I also gave you some information on, on health from my local doctor concerning the landfill. So I just wanted to make sure. Some of you, I hand-delivered it to, but the two gentlemen over here, Jean and Donna, I put it on your desk, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? And I think our meeting is being held on Zoom this evening. James, is it up and working? If anybody is, if anybody is on there, if you don't mind, I think you have to give the little wave symbol. So if you would like to speak at this time, we'd be more than willing to address you as well.
Mayor, if I may, this is Courtney McNair with Garber. I wanted to tell you there are two call-in listeners, and if they would like to speak to the issue, they will need to press star nine in order to have their hand raised.
Anybody, James?
Courtney, do we have anybody on?
At this time, no one has their hand raised. We have several, there's 34 people in attendance. Somebody did just leave us a note that said, "When will the vote be?" As I think a number of people are here because of this, from Ashley Baumgartner.
No, gotta go.
Apparently not.
Okay.
Oh, shit.
Okay, moving on down to item number seven. This is approval by city council to waive the three reading rule for all ordinance on the agenda this evening.
Make a motion to approve.
Second that.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Don?
Yes.
Larry? Jean?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Item number nine, new business. This is an ordinance, or approval of an ordinance rezoning approximately 4.17.0 acres, located at 2210 Waste Management Drive from RMH and R1 to EUL exclusive use landfill. Mr. Aitman, if you don't mind?
You want me to read the title?
Yeah, I mean, if you would, I'd like you to also discuss covenants since they mentioned it.
Sure, happy to. City of Tontown, Washington County, Arkansas, an ordinance rezoning approximately 417.1 acres of real property located at 2210 Waste Management Drive in the city limits of Tontown, Arkansas, from RMHA and R, excuse me, RMHA and R1 to EU1 exclusive use landfill.
And I have a motion to approve.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second that.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion, please. And before we have discussion, if you don't mind, I know Mr. Nolan, is that right? Okay. I know you've brought up some things for the mature on as far as covenants go, that you're claiming that there should be some suit between the neighbors and Waste Management. I would like for comments from our city attorney, because this is not the first time that covenants have been brought up about the landfill. For those of you that haven't seen the map, Courtney, are you online with us?
I am. I am. Can you hear me now?
Don't see her on there, do you, James?
Yeah, she's on.
No, sir.
Courtney, can you hear us now?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I could barely hear you. Can you go again?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Please, please have her put up the map that we had with the outline.
Can you put up the map, please? I can barely hear you, not coming over the main speakers.
Okay.
And that's a recording.
Thanks, Beau.
Apparently she's not being able to hear us.
So I think that. You guys can hear me.
Anyway, the landfill itself, the rezoning portion, I apologize, there she is, she's got it up.
But I don't think they can hear me. I'm texting James. I apologize for the confusion.
Yeah, the yellow outline, Courtney? There you go. Can all of you see that? Okay? I hope, I hope the screens are big enough. We're supposed to be installing some new ones next week, but anyway. The portion that you see outlined in yellow, Mr. Nolan, make sure we're all on the same page. There you go. This is the 180 acres that you speak of, correct? Alright. Where you see it drawn in green that goes in between it, there's approximately 20 acres that falls into this 180 acres. Okay? So that green line and the green and purple and red that you see, that is the current landfill operations as we know it. That's currently, all of it currently is zoned with the mobile home zoning on it. And what is being proposed here tonight is everything in the green, along with that little section that falls down into the yellow, which is approximately 20 acres, is what is being considered for rezoning here this evening. So anyway, with that said, like I said, I know that some questions have been asked about covenants. Will this zoning affect any covenants that's on that portion of land, okay? So I'm gonna let my attorney speak to that, if you don't mind.
Happy to, Mayor. Thank you, council. A couple weeks ago, Renee called me up and I came into the office, and it was a gentleman who had copies of covenants and a Chancery Court Order from 1992 regarding certain properties along here that have been, that have been raised. And I talked to the gentleman for a while. He graciously provided me copies of correspondence between attorneys in the 90s and then the Chancery Court Order and then references to, to covenants and, and some later things that happened in, in, in 2000. And he brought me a stack of that, and I asked him to have a copy, and I took it back and, and reviewed it. The, what I was checking for was to see whether there was any involvement in any of those, either the, the court action or in the covenants with the city of Tontown. Because if, if, if there was, I wanted to look at that pretty closely, make sure, especially the court order, the 90's court order didn't involve the city of Tontown. I reviewed it. I did not see any involvement with the city of Tontown. I, I get this question a lot, because you often will run into rezoning issues or issues that a city is handling, and somebody from a subdivision or property owner will come in and, and mention covenants. Say that, you know, there's restricted covenants on the, on the property, and whatever it is that the applicant is, is requesting to do from the city, they can't do because there's a covenant. And covenants are not something that the city can take into consideration. They are a contract between property owners. So if you think of it as two parties having a contract, and there's something that comes before the city, and the parties are alleging a contract, that's not something that the city adjudicates. We, we do the zoning, we have very specific criteria that we follow with our, with any zoning request. And that has to do with future land use, with the current use, with the compatibility, those type of things. Covenants or private contracts aren't a part of that. And this is pretty universal. You go to any city in the state of Arkansas, you're gonna hear the same thing over and over and over again. So what I talked to the gentleman about, what I did with those covenants, I reviewed them, I wanted to make sure that we were not, that we as the city of Tontown was not addressed in any of those court documents or, or correspondences or, and, and we were not, we're not a party to any of that. We don't have any ability to enforce those covenants or deny enforcement of those covenants. That would all have to happen through the judicial process. I did provide everything that I had to the legal counsel for Waste Management to review. And I sent it to them a couple weeks ago. Heard back from them that they had reviewed it. And, yeah, since that time, have been urging anybody who has issues with the covenants to, to be in contact with, with Waste Management. Ultimately, if there were an issue between the parties on that, on that particular issue, that would be an issue that would have to be decided between them without the city in, in a judicial process in a court case. And I guess I wanted to leave on this one last point. If we did decide a rezoning based on covenants, and, and we did that, and we said, "No, we're gonna deny a rezoning because there are these restrictive covenants that are out there", that would be a lawsuit that I could not defend in court, because it's not a part of our criteria. We have to follow that criteria. That's what we do in every single rezoning, and covenants aren't a part of that. So I, I want to make sure it's clear to everybody that that's the, that's the advice, and that's what we give on every single time. There's never been a time that I've been here that covenants have come up in, in discussion where we have said, "Yeah, let's take that into account." We've always said, "No, we cannot. That's between private parties. That's a, a, a separate contract, doesn't involve the city. We can't even enforce it." If the parties want to enforce it, they have a way to do that. So if there are any questions about that, I'm happy to, you know, try to, try to address them, but it's really something that, that the applicant needs to, needs to address and not the, not the city.
So now then, I'll offer this up for discussion amongst the council. Hearing none, I ask for a motion?
You got a motion?
Oh, excuse me. Roll call, please.
Amber?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Here's a mercy.
Motion carries. Moving down to item 9B. Approval of an ordinance amending section 152.144 Streets of Chapter 152 Development and Subdivision Regulations of Tontown Municipal Code. Mr. Aitman?
I'm getting there.
Okay.
City of Tontown, Washington County, Arkansas, an ordinance amending section 152.144 Streets of Chapter 152 Development and Subdivision Regulations of the Tontown Municipal Code and declaring an emergency.
Got it, alright. And would ask for a motion? Counsel, have you found it yet?
Motion to approve.
Second it.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion, please. Seeing none, roll call.
Jean?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Motion carries. It does have an emergency clause with it. It does it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So I would need a motion for the emergency clause?
Accept it. Emergency clause.
Thank you, sir. Second.
Second that.
Thanks, sir. Roll call.
Jean?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Larry? Arthur?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Moving down to 9C, this approval of an ordinance amending section 153.087 Planned Unit Developments. Mr. Aitman? You found it?
Yep. City of Tontown, Washington County, Arkansas, an ordinance amending section 153.087 Planned Unit Development District of Chapter 153 Zoning Regulations of the Tontown Municipal Code and declaring an emergency.
Would accept a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Somebody feel like a little explanation on this. What, what is this going to be for? Is this for the Joe Rosa place?
No, sir. No, what this is, is fixing some language in our PUD ordinance that the last time the PUD ordinance was discussed, had to have about 20 different phone calls to make sure we understood what 20% meant. So the planning board met last week on a special hearing to draft new language to where, and basically what I told the planning board at that time is I would like to make the language to where a five-year-old could understand it. So I think Larry and Jean were both at the meeting. The planning board hashed it around for about an hour, I think, trying to make sure they were clear and deliberate as to what everything meant in the PUD and what 20%, 3%, everything means as far as that ordinance goes. But this is not tied to anybody requesting a PUD. No, sir. It's clarifying the language. And you can see when you flip back to page four of 12 is where it starts, where the red line, some changes in it for you. Where they've taken out some of the language for you.
Mayor, may I?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
There, part of it, council, was that there was several terms used for the same thing in some parts, and then several, the same terms used for different things in other parts. So they would have common open space defined as what, in, in the subdivision where you consider common space, that, that's owned by the POA. And other place in the code, it would be called open space, another place would be called green space, another place it'd be called lawns. And depending on what that was, had different impacts. So interpreting what that meant became a bit of a challenge. And so the, the redrafting that occurred here made that, tried to make that abundantly clear exactly what each one of those referred to when you're reviewing, when you're reviewing a PUD. So the lion's share of that is under nine on page six of 12. And the, just the reason it's so lengthy is that we just wanted to make it as clear as possible, so there wouldn't be confusion in the future.
To answer your question, Arthur?
Clear as mud.
Clear as mud. Okay. Well, feel, feel free to ask more if you want.
I don't know.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Don?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Arthur?
No.
This does have an emergency clause with it, council?
Make a motion to accept emergency clause.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Don?
Yes.
Larry? Jean?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Arthur?
No.
Item 9D. Approval ordinance amending section 152. Mr. Aitman?
City of Tontown, Washington County, Arkansas, an ordinance amending section 152.080 applicability in section 152.082 review and approval of Chapter 152 Development and Subdivision Regulations of the Tontown Municipal Code and declaring an emergency.
Accept a motion to approve?
Second it.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion? Have a motion and a second. Discussion? Roll call.
Larry?
Yeah.
Jean?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Item nine E. Whoops, emergency clause in there. Yes, I'm sorry. There is emergency clause attached, so accept a motion for emergency clause on this one. My apologies.
Make a motion to accept emergency clause.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Larry? Jean?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Now then, moving down to nine E, counsel, this is a resolution supporting House Joint Resolution 1018 of 2019, proposing amendment to the Arkansas Constitution to continue to levy a half-cent sales tax for the state highways and bridges, county roads, bridges and other surface transportations and city streets, bridges and other surface transportations after the retirement of the bond authorized in Amendment 91 as special revenue to be distributed under the Arkansas Highway Revenue Distribution Law. So would accept a motion to approve said resolution?
Make a motion to approve.
Second it.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Amber?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Larry? Arthur?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And to also inform the audience, what that was is, is that is your counsel supporting issue one on the ballot that's coming up in November 3rd. For those that have not heard about it, and I'm taking the opportunity now to, to tell you a little bit about it. Arkansas for the last 10 years, I think, has had a half-cent sales tax that supports your highways and funds all the highways. And currently, right now, on the table for our part of the world is to widening Highway 112 from the new Don Tyson that's fixing to come in on 112 South all the way up to the new 612 as part of this money that we're trying to get. Also, the new 612 bypass is part of that, and they're showing right now, if this bill passes, the funding for it, they would start work on it in 2022 on all three of those projects. So obviously, we're in favor of supporting it to, to help our streets and our towns, and it also helps your city get state turnback to hopefully keep our roads up. So that's for the reason for us supporting that resolution this evening. All right, nine F is approval of hire of a part-time recruitment and retention officer pursuant to the recently awarded SAFER grant. Counsel, let me explain a little bit of this to you. Todd Wigzigman, our operations chief, applied for a SAFER grant. This was his third attempt with this federal grant funding for the SAFER grant. What this is enabling the city to do is to hire a, a person part-time to work at the fire station and also work in conjunction with the fire department in hopes that we gain volunteers to our, our fire department that we have here in town. Also, this grant funding is set up to where it will pay for three individuals per year for three years to be able to send them to school. So you get nine people qualified to go get their firefighter one and two, basic EMT and EMT skills to become firemen, hopefully in the future. So it's a pretty exciting grant. We, we put our hopes into getting it each and every year, and we're denied the last two, and finally the three strikes, and you finally hit the ball, so to speak. So we're, we're pleased to, to be able to get this a grant. So even though we, we couldn't formally plan for it within our budget this last year, we're asking that we go ahead and hire this person for this year. So what, we were asking you to amend our budget to go ahead and hire this person, and how this is structured is the city would have to pay the salary of this person, and then we would be reimbursed from the grant funding. So at the end of the day, the cost of this person is not costing the city anything for three years. Okay? So at this time, I would accept a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Arthur? Larry? Jean?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Item number nine G. You know, for me, this is probably the hardest thing they've had to do in a while, but I am forced at this time to declare a vacancy in Ward Three, Position Two, and set up a special meeting for the appointment of a new alderman for the city of Tonton. For those in this room that know, Mr. Tommy Granata passed away, which was an alderman on this, this body for the last, God, two or three terms, and was previous mayor of Tonton. But unfortunately, we have to, to move forward. So by declaring an emergency, we're mandated by law that we have to fill that position within the next 30 days. So what I'm asking approval of the council to do this evening is I would like to set a time because obviously the next scheduled council meeting is going to be during the elections on November 3rd. So I would ask that the council approve a, a special meeting to make an appointment for that position. So be thinking right now what, what day or evening that you would like to do this, excuse me, that you would like to do this. Also, to let this audience know who is eligible for this position, Mr. Granata's ward encompassed everything south of Highway 412 inside the city limits and everything west of Barrington or South Barrington. So it's that quadrant of the city is his area. So if you live inside the city in those areas, you're more than welcome to make application with the city to apply for his position. What I ask is, is that you send me or my staff or anybody here at City Hall some information about you, i.e. where you live, most importantly, to make sure that you're in that area. Also, your phone number, if you don't mind. And what I am doing is currently we have two applicants so far, and I will be dispersing any other information of anybody that would like to put their name in the hat for that position to give it to the council. It is not an appointment made by the mayor. It is an appointment that is made by your city council. So what has to happen is they have to hold a meeting, and then they will go into executive session after whoever has made application. I will allow them to get up and speak, tell us anything that you want to tell us about yourself and why you think that you deserve to be a councilman. Okay? So during that special meeting is when we'll have that happen. Or if you're here tonight, I don't mind offering the floor to you at the end of this meeting to speak to. Okay? With that said, counsel, what would be a preferable evening for you?
Could we do this possibly during the Cal meeting? Or should, if we have our, our meeting, obviously, we're not going to have an election. If nothing else, Monday prior, which that would be awfully.
So you're saying the 20th?
Yes. Either that or the November the 2nd, but that's pushing it. So we'd have to, you can, you can swear them in.
Yeah, yeah, I'll be swearing them in that night. So it's whatever night that you guys pick.
Committee of the whole?
That would be the committee of the whole.
You know what I mean? Doing it before the committee of the whole.
Week before, have a special meeting before.
Yeah, that's fine.
If that's agreeable with everybody and, and.
Would you care to put that into a motion, please?
I make a motion that we have our special meeting to assign a new alderman on the 20th of this month.
Okay.
Prior to our committee of the whole meeting.
Second it.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Amber?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Motion carries. So the 20th before 6 o'clock. So those of you sitting in the audience, if you are wanting to apply for that position, please get your name in the hat. Like I said, you can either send me an email, you can send my assistant email, or anybody up here that you can get the email address for, or you can drop it off here in person if you like. And we'll make sure to disperse that information to the council in case they want to visit with you prior to. We don't mind at all. Also, if you'd like to speak, if you're in the room this evening and you'd like to be noticed after the meeting is over or before we adjourn the meeting, I'll be more than happy at the very end of the comment section to let you jump up and say your piece. Or come to the 20th meeting. We will hold the special meeting at 6 o'clock straight up. And then after the special meeting is concluded, then we'll go on with our Cal meeting. All right? Moving on down, this is item number nine H, approval of bids for the East Fletcher Road Project. Counsel, we, we've licked this calf over again because we held up on doing the road extension on East Fletcher due to the COVID crisis and not knowing exactly where we were going to be at with our, our tax earnings this year. It appears by our financial records that the impact of COVID-19 has not impacted us nearly as harsh as we thought it might with our finances. And obviously, for those of you that come in on Barrington, you see all the dirtwork that's going on. The school has started construction yesterday and are anticipating moving into the new school August of this next year. So with that in mind, we would like to go ahead and get started on putting the Fletcher Road connection in so we can relieve some of the traffic out onto 112 is our hopes. And I'm going to turn it over to James Clark because they had their bid opening today. And we did offer this up really with two different options that the bidders could bid on the project. And he'll tell you how the, the numbers came out and what it's for, and it'll be up to you to decide which option you take.
As mayor said, we did open bids this afternoon. Basically, we bid the same project that we bid back in the, in the spring with one addition or a bid alternate to add curb and gutter and storm drain, which would end up making the, the road a three-lane instead of a two-lane. The base bid is for a two-lane road with no curb and gutter and ditches for stormwater. There is, there are a few culvert crossings, but the edge of the road will basically be ditches. We did receive four bids, APAC Central, Heavy Constructors of Arkansas, NEC, and Diamond Sea Construction. The engineer's estimate for the project for the base bid was $1,465,551.50. And the bid alternate for the curb and gutter and storm drain engineer's estimate was $735,800 for a total bid of both phases of $2,201,351.50. Our low bidder was APAC Central with a bid of $1,276,853.16 for the base bid and $588,016.60 for the bid alternate. That gives us a total base bid plus bid alternate of $1,864,869.76. Any questions?
That's curb and gutter and everything, right?
The total bid is curb and gutter and storm drainage.
It's not, it's not sidewalks, though.
No sidewalks.
If we went with the base bid, is that just a two-lane?
That is a two-lane road, yes.
What is the school doing? Because the school, aren't they taken care of from Barrington to the end of Westbrook? Is that what they're?
Not all the way to the end of Westbrook. They'll be, well, from the west end of Westbrook, they will be doing basically three lanes out to South Barrington.
Three lanes, so we, wouldn't we want to match that road, which would?
There'll still be a section in the middle that won't be three-lane from where the school widens from the west end of Westbrook to South Barrington. From there to the east end of Fletcher would still be two lanes. And then this would start at the east end of Fletcher Road. If that makes sense.
And you said none of these have the sidewalks included in them?
Correct.
What, what's a rough estimate you would say for adding the sidewalks for that?
I couldn't venture a guess on that.
I just think that's going to be a really busy road, and I'd like to see it really nice. I think the three lanes would be ideal.
In the middle.
Can you explain the two-lane section? I guess I don't, I don't really understand the two-lane section, why it's going from three, two, three.
May I?
Certainly.
Okay. Where do you live at Westbrook? You know where the fences are?
Yes.
Where they end?
Yeah.
From both ends of the fences would be two-lane.
Okay.
Okay. What we had bid originally, and at the time that we had the original bid on this deal, the school wasn't really an option. It was just talked about. So at that time, we were mainly concerned with traffic coming out of the industrial park. So we kind of jumped and did phases in it, and we bought pieces here and there, and then we finally acquired the total piazza property extension to it. So what we've asked all the bid applicants to do or reproduce is the original bid that we came out with before. Now, the school has since come in after we submitted all this proposal and decided that they were going to fix this end of Fletcher, which is about a month behind of what we were attempting to do. So out of nowhere, the school upped and told us that, that they would take care of all the section of Fletcher in front of what they own, which is basically to the end of where the cemetery comes out. Does that make sense? And where your fence line comes out where you live. So if you look at where the school owns their land, all they're doing is, is a three-lane section right in that area. So we couldn't change what we were asking developers to bid because we already had it out. And we didn't realize that the school was going to jump up and tell us that they were going to put three-lane in there for us. They were going to have to do a, a half-section street just because their development, but they since come back and said, no, we're going to go ahead and take care of all of it for you. So it was kind of a thank you on, on our part for the school doing that. But it didn't quite match up with how we put this bid proposal together, unfortunately. So what James is saying is, is that if you come, if you build a three-lane road from 112 over here to where piazza intersects, then it will have to bottleneck down into two-lane. And then after your fence line, come back out to three-lane with, if you go the full-blown option for this deal. And also to kind of halfway answer some of your questions, Jean, about sidewalks. Typically, when developers come in and they, they put something on, on a piece of property, they go through a large-scale development process. And, and most generally, in all the ones that I've seen in the last four years, it has been a requirement that developer has to put in the sidewalk for us as part of their development. Now, if the city chooses that they want to go in and, and spend the money and, and put all these sidewalks down there for empty pasture land as we see it now, that, that's up to you. You can spend the money however you like. So basically, on the table before you tonight is you can either opt to spend 1 point, roughly 1.27 million and have a two-lane road, or you can spend 1.86 million and have a three-lane section with curb and guttering.
So we could have them rebid to do that two-lane section in the middle because that doesn't make any sense, like you said, to go from three, two, to three.
It would be a separate project.
But we could do that to make it all match, right?
Absolutely. There's nothing money can't buy, Miss Amber. And if you so choose, we'll put it out there.
It, it, it doesn't make any sense, but I do think it needs to be three-lane and not two, and definitely not three, two, three. So. Would, would it be better? This is just me asking. Would it be better to get that bid now and then do it all at once rather than start the project and get a bid later? What, what are your thoughts on that?
My thoughts currently is, is that every time we have this rebid, the price goes up. It's just a, a simple thought now. You know, obviously, if somebody is, is getting to do the whole thing, then they may look at it and say they'll do it a little bit cheaper because they're doing the whole thing. You know, I would, I would hate to have a separate bid right now because you may have some company that gets awarded to do the center section, and now we got three different companies working on one project. And which come first, the chicken or the egg type deal comes to, into play because you're going to have different contractor, contractors screaming at each other for not getting their project done first. If that makes sense. I know we had that same issue with the water line. If that makes sense. I know we had that same issue with the water line. We were trying to divide it up into three different contracts and it just didn't play out very well. But same token, you can deny all of these bids and we can lick the calf over if you choose.
How long would it take to get this process done again?
To rebid it?
Yeah.
A month and a half, two months? Am I right, James?
Yeah.
Cause you have to have engineers redraw the center section.
Right. I think the best option would be if that's the, the way the council wants to go is to, to go ahead and, uh, award the bid accordingly. And then we can, uh, ask the contractor and the engineer, um, to bid on that, you know, as a, a adder, uh, to do that center section. And we could get a price on it and then the, come back to the council and, uh,
Do you think it's that way that, like the mayor was saying?
Yes. Yes, you could get better pricing.
Well, first I'd like you to decide which way you want to go. If you do want us to look into that further, um, I don't know that I feel comfortable saying that we can just have the contractor that want it, look at it and give us another bid only because we're, you know, we're a first class city now and there's lots of hoops that we have to jump through as being a first class city as far as bidding things out. So if you don't mind, I would like to have our legal counsel make sure I can do that before I tell you we can do that, if that's fair.
Mayor, I'd have to get with the engineer and with James and look over the, the bid and then, uh, get some input on, on how big of a change that would be and see whether that would be possible. But we could, you could certainly authorize that to, to be done.
The only thing that scares me about putting it out to bid the whole project again, um, we didn't get as many bidders this time as we did last time. I think, uh, you know, canceling the contract the first time may have hurt us a little bit as far as the number of bidders we had for the second time. If we cancel it and went out again, we may only get one or two bids.
Well, how big are the properties off this? Is it big enough to be developed on both sides?
Couldn't hear you, sir.
The properties off this road, are they big enough to be developed into businesses and on both sides of the road?
As far as development potential goes, um, currently I think there's only maybe three or four individual owners between here and there. To tell you what their intentions are as far as I can tell that they're planning to do with it. You know, one of the things that we discussed when we purchased the easements for, for those was zoning, um, those areas, some sort of commercial zoning. So, you know, to kind of create some more commercial within the city of Tonnitown. So, you know, it could possibly open up the area for a little bit more commercial potential. And also, um, you know, on the far end is, uh, you're going to have to tell me the name of the apartment complex because I can't remember.
Highland Park.
Highland Parks. It's at the far end of this, which obviously I think that's what Ms. Ibarra is referring to about children walking. They're going to be attending the school probably from that apartment complex as well. How many units are down there? Rough guess?
Less than three hundred.
So a possibility of, we'll say a hundred, two hundred kids, maybe could be.
Maybe a hundred, maybe.
Yeah, possibly. Um, that could be attending school there. So we're riding a bicycle to school. I mean, it's up to you, council. I, I can tell you that budget wise, we only budgeted a million dollars for next year for this project. Um, the reason why we only budgeted a million dollars for this project next year was in anticipation of the bids and, and hopefully being able to spend money that we have budgeted for this year on the project going forward. So, um, you know, if we could get the project started and not trying to spend the city's money at all, but get it started and pay for part of it and then finish out next year with a million dollars in our budget to finish, that would help us out instead of having to go back through and, and, and trying to redo your budget for next year to pay for all this.
Well, I'll make a motion that we accept Apex, uh, bid for the deal and the alternate altogether.
Make sure I understand your motion is for the Apex bid award of one point eight six million. Is that right, James?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And is there a second? Did I hear that correctly, a second? Okay. Discussion?
So where would this put us on our sidewalks? What could, what could we do in a reasonable timeframe? Because I don't feel like we can wait for land to be developed. It could be three years. It could be 10 years before those developers come in and create these sidewalks. And it could be pieces throughout the street. So what is a good resolution to get this up immediately with the road or shortly thereafter?
As far as sidewalks go, um, to me, uh, I think that's an entirely separate conversation than this. If you're, and if you're anticipating wanting sidewalks in that area and you're wanting the city to fund those sidewalks, then, um, you know, obviously we would have to get some sort of idea from our, when contractor engineers to kind of get a rough ballpark of price on those. And then you'll have to put it before the council, um, at a cow meeting to discuss, obviously. And then, uh, gain approval from the council to go forward with it and then put it out for bid, like anything we do as a first class city. So you're going to be looking, and I'm just going to throw it out there, at least two months. So if you're asking for a timeline to really press it.
So we could throw it to that and let them bid on it. So after they completed the street, they could, if they so chose to.
If somebody bid on it.
It was reasonable, we, we accept and they could do the sidewalks as well.
Like I said, it's all about money.
Yeah.
But, uh, and also the thing that you got to kind of consider a little bit is timing of the year. You know, two more months, we're kind of into winter.
Yeah.
Is there going to be a contractor going to pour these sidewalks? Are they going to be ready to be poured? I don't know that the road will be ready by then to do that. It'll probably be mid summer before any of that could happen. So I don't know, James, you can offer up your opinion if you like, but, um, I don't know that you, you guys really need to rush the sidewalk thing right now because it is going to take some time to get the street going. Unless they just have a dry, dry winter.
I agree with that. Uh, like you say, it's going to take a few months to get the, the road built and that would have to be done prior to the sidewalk project. So, uh, we can start working toward, you know, getting a, a plan together and, and getting a cost estimate. Uh, we could probably have that in the next couple of months, uh, easy enough. And then we can decide whether or not we can afford to do it.
That's your question, sir?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Gene?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
Move down to item 10, comments from Alderman. Mr. Delba?
Uh, no comment tonight. Thank you.
Mr. McCartney?
Uh, no comment.
Mr. Penzo?
Mr. Clark? This is what I brought up the last meeting. I went and talked to Dano over there and they made this sign here for JB Hunt Park. Just the sign alone, and I haven't talked to him since. He said they're about, about three thousand dollars. That's not including the base. But he did tell me that, uh, if we have two of them made, we might be able to get them made a little bit cheaper than that. But then we'd have to get the, get the base made, somebody to make the base to set it on. So, but that's about, about three grand a piece. And then I don't know where we'd put them on 412 that. So. Just like Springs, Springdale's got one up, Elmer Springs got one up, Cave Springs got one up. And, uh, I don't, I think it would, I think it'd look nice myself, but I know you don't get nothing for nothing. It's, it's not cheap, but.
Is there any way they could, um, possibly furnish us with a design? That way you could present it as a motion for approval to have it made? Or do you have to pay them some, something in advance of designing for you?
Hell, I can go back and talk to him. This is, I just had this one. I didn't send it to me on the phone. But we can make it smaller and make it bigger. I guess whichever way you want to, want to do it. And whichever way you want to, I don't know what they want on it. If they want it just like on the park down there. It's got Harris Manolo Park. Then they got bunches of grapes underneath it. I don't know if y'all want it like that. Whichever way.
You want to check and see if they will come up with some sort of design? And that way you can come in and ask for approval to have it made and get it paid for and all that. And we'll try to, I'll, I'll do my best to see what we can do as far as locating, um, some properties that, that could be put on. Obviously you'll have to be some sort of easement request, I'm sure.
Right.
Which we haven't had a lot of good luck at.
I'll go back and talk to him. Maybe he can draw us up a, a picture or something on a, probably do it on the computer, so.
Okay.
Okay, I'm good.
Ms. Ibarra?
No comments, Mayor.
Larry?
I don't have a lot. I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. It's different looking out and seeing, seeing faces out there. It's been pretty quiet lately, but sure appreciate you people coming out.
All right, comments from me. Once again, I'd like to reiterate, thank you all for coming. We do appreciate you here. You do have a voice in Tonnitown. Um, I know I've spoken to several of you in the room. We had a special meeting up here on Friday, um, that I invited a whole host of people to come up and we spoke for, gosh, I think three and a half hours was the conversation. So I appreciate them coming in and, and visiting with me about issues that they have. By all means, please keep checking our website. Uh, if you don't feel like you're being notified about things, um, let us know. I mean, if there's something that we can do different to help you know about what is coming up or what is being on the board or, or discussed. Uh, we, uh, do have our agendas posted on the website as quickly as we can. Sometimes stuff gets added last minute and we apologize for that, but it's just what it is, reality. But, uh, we do value your input and want to know what you think about anything that's going on in Tonnitown, okay? I don't know how many of you've noticed at all, but if you go out towards the east end of our town, uh, we've been working on a, a little city project for a little while and, uh, fire hydrants are changing colors as we speak. Our girl Sandy that works in the park has been painting all of our fire hydrants with the Tonnitown Italian flag on it, uh, as part of a little project that we, uh, got approved about a year ago and just been lax on getting it done. But, uh, she's, uh, popped out several out, uh, in the last couple of weeks. And I think, I don't know if y'all have seen them or not, but I like them real well, um, and look real good. Also with that being said about parks, I, I need to inform this body that, uh, we, uh, once again made it, uh, to the final round of park grants, uh, with the state. And I'll be going down to, uh, make a pitch for our parks. Uh, we've asked for a matching grant of a little over two hundred thousand dollars. Um, and if we get awarded this grant, uh, our intention i- is to make our park more inclusive, if you will, to folks. Currently what we have projected for the park is remodeling the tennis court out there, adding some basketball goals to it and, and lighting it is what we would like to do. Um, also the bowie ball court, uh, we're going to try to make it to where it's more friendly, uh, to, uh, handicap folks and be able to make it more accessible for them to come play bowie ball if they have it. Uh, we want them to be involved in that experience. Um, also where our intentions are is to add some more swings, uh, their handicap accessible swings, uh, in the park. And then also one of the things that I'm just really excited about trying to get on board is we're wanting to create what's called a ninja park, uh, for adults instead of just kids to utilize in the park. And I fully expect to see my fire department running on it every day, but that's one of my goals and objectives. With that being said, um, you know, when I first became mayor, I, I assigned several committees, uh, to help me out and to try to figure out some things that we need to get done. And I was kind of lax in the last couple of years of, of having their input. Um, sitting on our park committee, uh, still in this council is Mr. Larry Ardemoney and Arthur Penzo. Henry Piazza was also on that park committee at the time, but, uh, his replacement now is Ms. Amber Ibarra. And I know that her and her children participate in our, our farmer's market every Saturday. If you haven't come out and, and seen that little event, it's pretty cool. I've gained 10 pounds buying popcorn from her girls. But anyway, so I am placing Ms. Ibarra on that committee. So I'm going to make her the ramrod of making sure that the park, uh, looks good and anything that it needs or anything that's going on with it, that she can salt with Larry and, and Arthur Penzo about. And I look forward to hearing their suggestions. Also, um, James came in with, uh, some folks a couple meetings ago that offered up suggestions on our streets in Tonnitown. You know, pretty much everything that we have been doing has been a lot of knee jerk reaction, uh, to potholes and, and road edges and such. Um, it seems like that we try to jump on them when one of these cats up here on the council comes and complains to us about it or when a citizen calls us and complains, uh, when in reality, what I feel like we need to be doing is, uh, becoming more proactive with our streets and trying to anticipate deterioration, if you will. So we had a company came in that drove each and every one of our streets, presented us with a presentation and also laid out, uh, our worst streets to our best streets. And it was quite surprising to us when we started looking at it that we really didn't think that street looked too bad. And some of those we thought really looked great that weren't. So what, uh, what I would like to do is we're changing our budget format, uh, this next year. And, and we're offering some of our one cent sales tax to go back into a street program. Um, this funding will initiate approximately a hundred thousand dollars a year that, uh, I want us to set aside for maintenance of our streets. So with doing so, what I would like to do is create a roads committee in honor of Mr. Granada because he was my, uh, my biggest complainer up here on city council about anything streets. Uh, so in his name, I would like to offer up three of you to be a streets committee. So I will either accept volunteers within the next 30 seconds or I will appoint, your choice. Going once, going twice. Okay. Gene McCartney, you're on it and Larry Ardemoney, you're on it. And the person that gets appointed to our next council position will be on it as well. So there's my named folks. Okay. So I fully expect for you guys to get together and, uh, give us a list of what you guys feel like needs or ladies, depending on who gets on council and, uh, get with me and, uh, let's make a plan for next year of, uh, what we're going to work on and how we're going to work on it. And just know that you got approximately a hundred thousand dollars to spend on them. Fair enough? Any questions? All right. Moving on down to my list, uh, earlier in this meeting, I did offer that if anybody in this room is anticipating putting their name in for city council and you would like to be heard this evening, by all means, please step to the podium and you can give your pitch. Going once. Don't be scared. We don't bite. Todd? All right. With that said, I'm going to move down to comments from our city attorney.
No comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, motion to adjourn. Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Thank you all. We appreciate you folks. Have a safe drive home.
Yes, sir. You have an iPhone.
What y'all decide.
I don't know iPhone.
Where you and I are, I think.
How do you get to your?
Right. So they're not even rezoning this. So it's still under the the RMH one, which means they